Seconds, four, three, two, one. Here we go. Let's call this meeting the Tuscaloosa City Council to order. Everyone, please rise for the council prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. Dear God, bless our proceedings tonight. Give us wisdom to know what is just and the strength to do what is right. Amen?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, second vote with Counselor Wilson?
Yes.
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 Yes. Minutes approved.
I'm missing something.
Okay. Counselor Wilson, will you please join me down here at the podium, please, sir? I'd like to read this proclamation into the record. Whereas Reverend Dr. Matthew Wilson, a lifelong Tuscaloosa resident, graduated with honors from Central High School, earning a bachelor's degree in religion and philosophy from Stillman College, followed by a master's of divinity from the Morehouse School of Religion at the Interdominational Theological Center in Atlanta. He also received an honorary doctorate of divinity from St. Luke Episcopal School of Biblical Studies and completed a chaplaincy residency at UAB in 2016. And whereas Wilson's commitment to education and youth development was evident during his tenure on the Tuscaloosa City School Board of Education from 2017 to 2021. In 2021, he was elected, of course, to represent District One on the Tuscaloosa City Council, where he focused on initiatives such as improving infrastructure, promoting affordable housing, enhancing recreational opportunities, and expanding broadband access. And whereas throughout his service, Wilson actively engaged with his community, serving as a board member of Kids and Kin, volunteering with the Junior League of Tuscaloosa, and participating in the Book Buddies Program of the University of Alabama. He also held leadership roles in organizations like the Tuscaloosa Inter-Dominational Ministerial Alliance and the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, Tuscaloosa Chapter SCLC. Whereas Wilson's service has also been marked by courage, compassion, and a deep belief in the power of community. His influence will endure in the lives he has touched, the policies he helped shape, and the spirit of justice and equity that he championed. Now, before it be resolved that I, on behalf of Mayor Walt Maddox, and behalf of this city council, do hereby honor Counselor Reverend Dr. Matthew Wilson for his unwavering dedication, visionary leadership, and tireless advocacy on behalf of the people of District One and the entire city. Matthew, I want to thank you for your four years of service. It's been an honor working with you, and I know we'll stay in touch and wish you the very best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I get after reading all of that.
Shortest speech you ever did.
I'll have some more to say on the line.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir. I was going to ask, does any of the city councilmen would like to have any comments to Counselor Wilson?
Matthew, I'm not an orator. But people that aren't involved in this don't know how many sleepless nights you've had, how many times you've had to wrestle with issues,
Yes.
almost wrestle with constituents. And it's not near as easy as people on the outside see it. And I just want to thank you for the last four years. I appreciate you, and God bless you. The Lord's got something very special for you. I believe that, brother.
Definitely a pleasure to serve with you, my brother.
Congratulations.
Fair winds and following seas, brother.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any proclamations or statements by other councilmen? Okay. Agenda item comments by citizens?
Yes, sir. Jason Walker is here to speak on the Sports Illustrated item.
Okay. Jason, come forward, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Be very brief, just since we were tentatively on the agenda for a night. And Jeff Richards with Travel and Leisure was in town. And so we've had more productive meetings today, just to give you an update with local concerned neighbors and citizens, and just think we're continuing to refine the project and looking forward to June 3rd, when the hearing date is tentatively set, I guess, to come and make a more formal, final presentation. But we do think we've further chipped away at it based on the comments. It'll have something that the community at large will be proud of for generations.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
Appreciate that. And also, for any of you tuning in or here tonight expecting to have a public hearing or a vote on the Sports Illustrated Resort, that will have now been moved to June the 3rd. And I'd also like to say this is our last city council meeting at 6:00. Starting next Tuesday, all committee meetings will be running almost one after the other. We'll have to pass that through an organizational meeting after swearing in. Swearing in is Monday at 10:00 a.m. And then the next first city council meeting of the new council will be on Tuesday, the 20th. And again, starting times will be 5:00 p.m. For all further city council meetings after tonight. All right, any council committee reports? Unfinished business, consent agenda?
This approves items A through H on the consent agenda.
Do you hear motion?
So moved.
Having motion, second, voting with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
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 Consent agenda approved. Public hearings?
This will set the cost of demolition of the property located at 2814 22nd Street and authorize the filing of a lien.
Hear motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any staff? Anything about, no?
Mm-mm.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anybody like to speak for or against this demolition of property located at 2814 22nd Street? Now's your time. A, B, none, voting with Counselor Wilson?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Motion carries. Clerk?
This will approve a Class II club liquor license for Two Dimes in Tuscaloosa.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Mr. Mills?
All right, good evening, counsel. This is ABC Alcohol Application 25-028 for a club liquor Class II for Two Dimes located at 1307 University Boulevard. Again, they're applying for a club liquor Class II license. Location, again, 1307 University Boulevard. This is an area picture of the location, followed by the zoning map. Next, we have adjacent businesses located next to the property. Their occupancy for this particular location will be 1,500 people. At this time, all my reports have been filed with the city clerk office. Chief Blankley, come give your support, followed by the applicant to answer any questions.
Chief Blankley?
Good afternoon, counsel. As stated in previous meetings, when this establishment first come to light, we were under the impression that it was going to be a concert hall kind of venue. I just learned today that they're going to host fraternity and sorority parties and have a different atmosphere. We were more okay with the concert aspect because dump out should be at 11:00. Normally, concerts don't go till 1:00 in the morning. With the new aspect in there, PD does have concern that you've got a large number of dump outs that late at night. And then you do have a lot of people in that establishment and then on the adjacent sidewalks. And I know earlier it was mentioned about overcrowding, but we do still worry about overcrowding on the strip. Like I said, the concert aspect of it, there wouldn't be concerts all the time. But the other aspect of it, opening up to a private club and the bar and that kind of stuff, we do have concern with that.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Is applicant here? And please come forward and give your name and address for the record.
Howdy. I'm Rick Mayers. My address is 6538 Waterfront Drive, Tuscaloosa, Alabama.
Rick, I'll start it off. Can you just give us an overview of what you're expecting Two Dimes venue to be?
Yes, sir. It's a venue that we plan to rent out to a lot of people. Have events there from weddings to musical events to comedy night. We plan to do that twice a month. To just buy anybody in the local community, we'll come in and partner with them. If they want to come in and rent the venue and partner on it and have some sort of party or some sort of atmosphere, some sort of birthday party, we'll be doing that. And concerts. And we also will be renting the venue to sororities and fraternities as well.
What hours? You may have some things booked already. What are your hours going to be, or what do you expect your hours to be?
Right now, I went back and confirmed this, but right now, all the bookings that we have start at 5:00 p.m. And they last into 10:00 p.m. Now, we do plan to have weddings there that will be more likely earlier during the day. So the hours could start earlier. But we don't anticipate to be many going past 10:00 p.m. on all the bookings that we have. Concerts may roll over, you know, depending on how the artist feels and he's really feeling himself and the music. But it could roll over a little bit. But that's kind of our...
The chief has concerns about overcrowding, as we all do. And he mentioned fraternity parties, sorority parties. How many people do you anticipate? Do you anticipate 1,500 people for fraternity party?
We don't have any bookings anywhere close to that. This may be a little too much. In fact, me and my partners have argued a little bit about it because the majority have been half that. Majority of the bookings have been around 700. We have one that's come up to 1,200. That's the biggest that we have. But the majority of them are around 700 to 800 in occupancy.
Rick, can you tell us about your security measures that you have in place?
Yes, sir. Let me let my operational partner speak on that. He's more educated.
I'm Grant McCabe. I was at it 7004 Windward Avenue. So as far as the security personnel goes, we will have in-house security, just so they're familiar with our operations and the way that we like to run the event space. So we have worked with outside security companies in the past, and it's typically constantly different individuals that are coming in, working for you on a nightly basis. And it's hard for them to get a good feel for the way that you want things run. So we will have our own in-house security.
And we'll, and of course, I assume that you all perhaps have cameras, correct?
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
And so will those cameras be open to, if there was an incident, at least TPD could be able to access those?
Yes, yes. We will have every square foot of the establishment covered that you are by law, you know, able to cover. So excluding restrooms and things of that nature. So that'll be interior and exterior as well. So if law enforcement does need any exterior footage that, you know, may have happened from a traffic accident or anything of that nature, you know, we'd be happy to help out there as well.
You know, the council questions before I open up the public hearing?
Just a comment. In years past, we've had people that came before us and got a license about this and told us what they were going to do. And it turned out not to be what they did. Should this pass, I truly hope that y'all do what you've told us tonight.
We value our reputation within the city with all of our endeavors, so. Thank you.
We may call you back after public hearing. Chief, do you have any comments? And I asked you earlier about your thoughts about in-house security over hiring a security firm?
I agree with Grant's aspect of that. When you hire security companies, they're maybe more of a rotation of who you get. We do work with our bars downtown, and we get familiar with our security people, especially their head of security people. It's easier for us to go to them and say, hey, we got this issue or this. So I believe they're spot on with hiring internal security rather than doing a company that you may get a rotation of people. So I do agree with that.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone I'd like to speak for or against? Please come and give your name and address for the record. And remember, we have a five-minute limit on public comments. Anyone? B and none? Anybody else have any questions before I call for a vote? Okay. Again, the public hearing now is closed. We're considering the approval of the ABC application, Two Dimes Venue, voted with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Motion carries, five to one. Clerk?
This will approve an increase in the occupancy limit for Decades Pub and Grub.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion, second. Mr. Mills?
All right, good evening, counsel. This is Alcohol Application 25-026 for Big Dog Enterprises, DBA Decades Pub. They're applying for lounge retail liquor Class I. They're actually applying for occupancy increase. It's located at 2312 Fourth Street. Hours of operation will be 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Sundays, closed on Mondays. Tuesday through Thursday is 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Friday and Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 11:45 p.m. First slide shows the area view. Second slide shows you the zoning map. And the last slide shows adjacent businesses located near the property. All my reports have been filed with the city clerk office. Officer Chamber gives his report, followed by the applicant to answer any questions.
Is applicant here? Please come forward and give your name and address for the record.
Clifton Clark, 1302 21st Avenue, Northport.
Can you, much like the last applicant, tell us what type of establishment Big Dog Enterprises will be?
We're just expanding the Decades Pub and Grub that we have now and just...
Just in the occupancy limit, correct?
Yeah, we're just moving to the adjoining building where Los Toroscos was. We're just taking the building and moving it, going through that doorway and then into that. So we'll just have more room and more seating. We'll just sell you more food.
How much net increase will that afford you, do you know?
Sir?
How much net increase will that afford you, do you know?
As far as...
Occupancy?
Forty plus the patio, thirty-six. So seventy-six total.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, this is a public, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak for or against this application? Or this request, rather? A, B, and none will close the public hearing and vote him with Counselor Wilson?
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Motion carries. Clerk?
This will approve an expansion of the conditional use of a bar club for Copper Top.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Motion, second. Mr. Pons?
Thank you, guys. So this is a conditional use permit application. So Copper Top is requesting to expand their premises into the adjacent vacant tenant space, similar to what Decades is doing. However, they are a bar club, so they have to go through a conditional use process. Their hours of operations are going to remain the same as they are today, as well as the way that they operate. They will have a maximum occupancy of 250. And then this is also the expansion of their lounge liquor retail license, and they do have a current entertainment license. So again, the conditional use permit, they are classified as a bar club. And then that last bullet point there, cannot have greater than 250 occupants. Here's the floor plan that they have submitted for the new space. And then TPD, as well as FIRE, don't have any issues with the request.
I know, and I'm sure others, I know Counselor Busby met with owners and Chief Blankley at the establishment. And this reason for it is, was actually because of the additional bathroom? Is that the one?
So, yeah, they had expanded previously. And then now 1831 has closed down, or they're closing down. And so they're just taking over that space, similar to what Los Toroscos, what Decades is doing with Los Toroscos.
Mr. Turner, I think you're thinking of the expansion of...
That's exactly what I was thinking of.
This is an expansion into a neighboring suite, similar to Decades.
Correct. I'm just making sure y'all are paying attention. Does the conditional use provision allow us to undo this after a year if it's not satisfactory?
It is conditioned upon them operating the way that you're approving, yes. So this is, so, yeah, I mean, it's, I don't know if it's...
Sorry, it takes me a while to get my microphone on. I don't think a conditional use would allow this body to come back and just revisit it and unallow this. I do think if they were not operating within the parameters of their conditional use of what they're supposed to be doing, that could lead to zoning violations and ultimately a business license.
So, and also to expand upon that, the entertainment license piece as well, there is an audit at the end of the year to then renew that portion of their business license. And so that would come into play with this whole conditional use process as well. And the applicant is here.
Yes, applicant, please come forward, give your name and that address for the record.
Yes, sir. I'm Jeremy Wyatt at 11 Sherwood Drive.
Any questions? No questions? Good, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak for or against this expansion? A, C, none, the close of the public hearing, voting with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 And motion carries. Clerk?
This will adopt zoning amendment number six.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, second. Is that...
So this is a rezoning request. Mr. Stripling with Westerville Company, or Westerville Co. Is petitioning to rezone about 19 acres located south of 7415 New Watermelon Road. And this is from SFR 1 to LR. So they are annexing into the city. This is a location here. You can see it's in the PJ and the, you know, outside of city limits today. The LR is what they're going to, which is that bright green around it. And the reason for this request, they're annexing into the city for a new residential development. Here's the layout of the lots that they're proposing. And it was unanimously recommended for approval. And the applicant, Mr. Stripling, is here.
Okay. Is applicant here? Please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, council members. My name is Lance Stripling with the Westerville Company, 1400 Jat Warner Parkway. Any questions I may answer on this development?
These are state laws, correct?
Yes.
That's the only question? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stripling. This is a public hearing. Anybody would like to speak for or against this zoning amendment? A, B, and none, voting with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Motion carries. Clerk?
This adopts zoning amendment number seven to the zoning ordinance of Tuscaloosa.
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second. Motion, second. Mr. Pons?
Yes, sir. So these are text amendments that we've been over a few times now to quick-service restaurants. So I won't, you know, go into all the detail I have been going into. However, just to kind of give you a visual, this is an area that we're going to keep, you know, the fast-food restaurant allowance out of because it's more, you know, pedestrian uses. And then, you know, outside of this area and outside of the downtown area, we're allowing, it'll allow fast-food restaurants essentially and drive-throughs.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Pons? Thank you, sir. Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak for or against this amendment to the zoning ordinance? Okay. Close the public hearing and voting with Counselor Wilson?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
And motion carries. Resolutions and ordinances not of a general nature permanent operation. Clerk?
This will authorize the purchase of equipment, supplies, or services from Tuscaloosa Tractor Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, vote with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Motion carries. Clerk?
This will authorize a minor public works contract with Night Sign Industries Incorporated.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, second, vote with Counselor Wilson?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Motion carries. Clerk?
This will authorize a minor public works contract with K&amp;A Builders Incorporated.
Motion.
Motion, second, vote with Counselor Wilson?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Motion carries. Clerk?
This authorizes a minor public works contract with Nixon Power Services.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, vote with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Clerk?
This will authorize a consulting agreement with Kavanaugh McDonald Consulting, LLC.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, second, vote with Counselor Wilson?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Motion carries. Clerk?
This authorizes a consulting agreement with Kavanaugh McDonald Consulting, LLC, regarding the conversion of police and fire pension to RSA.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, vote with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Clerk?
This authorizes a disbursement from District One Improvement Funds for Oakdale Elementary School.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, second, vote with Counselor Wilson?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Motion carries. Clerk?
This authorizes a disbursement from District Seven Improvement Funds for the Benjamin Barnes YMCA.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, vote with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Clerk?
This authorizes execution of a grant application for the 2026 Transportation Alternatives Program.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, second, vote with Counselor Wilson?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Motion carries. Clerk?
This authorizes execution of a grant application for the 2025 State Homeland Security Grant Program for Tuscaloosa Fire Rescue.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, second, vote with Counselor Wilson?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Clerk? Motion carries. Clerk?
This authorizes execution of a grant application for the 2025 State Homeland Security Grant Program for the Tuscaloosa Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, vote with Councilor Lanier?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. They hear a call for suspension of the rules?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion second, suspend the rules, vote with Councilor Wilson?
Yes.
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 Rules are suspended. Clerk?
This declares an emergency and authorizes an emergency public works contract with Price Civil Services Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, vote with Councilor Lanier?
Yes.
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 And motion carries. Clerk, this is for ordinances and resolutions of general nature permanent operation for introduction.
This introduces zoning amendment number 11.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, vote with Councilor Wilson?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Clerk?
This declares property surplus and no longer needed for municipal purposes and authorizes disposal of former fire station 11.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, vote with Councilor Lanier?
Yes.
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 They hear a call for unanimous consent?
Second.
And we have a call for unanimous consent, voting with Councilor Wilson?
Yes.
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 And motion carries. Clerk?
This adopts a sales tax holiday for certain covered items for 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second, vote with Councilor Wilson?
Yes.
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 All unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion second, unanimous consent, vote with Councilor Lanier?
Yes.
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 And motion carries. For adoption?
Mr. Turner?
We have one more, I'm sorry. Clerk?
This authorizes amendment number 10 to the fiscal year 2025 general fund budget.
Moved up.
Second.
Motion second, vote with Councilor Wilson?
Yes.
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 They hear a call for unanimous consent?
Call for unanimous consent?
Motion second, vote with Councilor Wilson?
Yes.
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 And motion carries. For adoption?
This sets June 3rd as the date to consider approval of the development plan for 105 Rice Mine Road North.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second, or the June 3rd public hearing, and voting with Councilor Lanier?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Clerk?
This sets June 10th as the date for a hearing to consider zoning amendment number 11.
So moved.
Motion, they hear a second?
Second.
Motion second, vote with Councilor Wilson?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Autopian accounts?
This authorizes the payment of bills.
Pay gives bills.
Pay all of his bills.
Okay, that's great, voting with Councilor Lanier?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
I thought we already voted.
Yes, no, we gotta pay now, can't leave here, my bill's being paid. Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, and I thank you very much for that. Citizens' comments and other communications, any citizens have any comments to make? Yes, sir, Dennis?
Hello, hello, Counsel.
Hello, Dennis, give your name and address for the record, please.
Dennis Collins, I live at 1011 30th Street. I come today before the council concerned about a proposed fire station somewhere in the area of the police department or in that area. My biggest concern is this, we have two fire stations, one on 15th Street and Greensboro Avenue, and one, two blocks off of Skyland, off of Greensboro, I mean, off of Greensboro, two blocks. If we put one, I mean, these are approximately four miles apart, four to five miles apart, and my concern is, why do we need one in the middle of that? I mean, the response times of the firing from anywhere, what, five to eight minutes? So why do we need to put a fire station in the middle of a five, four to five block, a five, five, four to five mile radius? Okay, if we do that, then we got four fire stations, because we got one on US 11, that's four fire stations within a 10 mile radius. I mean, $2 million, we could use that, that money could be used for things like crime prevention, flooding, you know, gun violence, and all that, so I, I just don't see the point in that. I think it's a waste of the city's money, because I think our fire department response is very rapid, they got access to the roads by, with their lights and whistles, you know, five to seven, eight minutes, so I'm, I'm very concerned about that.
Well, I'm going to let Mr. Holmes explain, but this is actually a good thing because right now, this will, this will allow one fire station not to have to worry about the railroad tracks blocking them.
Okay. Go ahead.
Am I correct?
The button doesn't like my finger. Mr. Collins, I'm probably not the most educated person to speak on this, but I believe you're talking about fire station number one, which is at Greensboro, right there, 15th Street. Fire station number seven, which is on Skyland Boulevard, not too far off of Greensboro. Currently, fire station number five, which had been on Greensboro before, kind of between